Broadcast has been set.
All right, thank you. The time is now four forty-two P M on April the third, twenty twenty-four. The Climate Action Change Action Plan Ad Hoc Committee Meeting, I like to call it to order. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our first ad hoc committee meeting. My name is Dr. Kenneth Harris. I'm the Chair of this board. As well, the Chair of this committee, and I want to bring you greetings from District Seven specifically, and welcome, and thank you for joining us today. Today, we're joined by our Vice Chair Pamela Boozer Struthers, and we'll get to introductions just momentarily. Ms. Adeline, do you mind calling the role for me?
Yep, please excuse the pronunciations. I've been trying, practicing all afternoon to get some last names. All right, Dr. Kenneth Harris.
Present.
Ms. Boozer Strutter.
Present.
Donald Bell.
Present.
Kate Colonzi.
Present, it's Kate Wonderlick. Um, I have the spelling of my name on the.
Okay, I have that changed. Thank you. Okay, let's see this one. Is it Gazzie Gomez?
Here, present, it's Jassy.
Jassy, okay. Thank you. Joseph Jakuta.
Present.
Christina, I'm trying to mess up the last name. Is it Walk?
Walk, present.
Got it. Tim Meyer.
Present.
Dorothy Morrison. She's here, I saw earlier.
She's here, she's.
Sorry, I was on mute. It's fine. David Noto.
Noto, present.
Noto, thank you. Beth Novick.
Novick, yep, present.
Okay. Ramon Palancio Calvo.
Present.
Benjamin, is it Roche or Roush?
Yeah, second time, you got it.
Thank you. Antoine Thompson.
Present.
And a Sophia Villar.
Present.
Thank you. I'm so excited to have you all here virtually in the same space. May I have a motion to adopt the April third, twenty twenty-four Climate Action Change Action Plan Ad Hoc Committee Meeting Agenda?
Someone started.
So someone second, I didn't hear someone make.
That was, that was me.
Okay, so Mr. Myers made the motion, who's second?
I said second.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Boozer Struthers. All right, um, it's been moved and properly seconded. Are there any objections? Can I call for? Can I call a, I guess I'll call a roll call vote. No, there's no objections. There's no objections, right? We're passing. So the motion, the agenda has been passed. The April third, twenty, the April third, twenty twenty-four Agenda has been properly adopted. Moving on now to our introductions, I'm so excited for community and stakeholders to hear about this phenomenal committee that we put together. I'll start off and then I'll pass to Pam and we'll do a kind of popcorn stop, and we just call someone next after you. So again, my name is Dr. Kenneth Harris. I represent the seventh, the seventh district on the Prince George County Board of Education. I am so excited about the work we are doing, the work we have already done, the work that the work group led under. Board Member Boozer Strutter has got us to this point of implementation. And I'm excited, I'm happy to hear about all the amazing things that PG CPS is doing, not only on the local level, but on a national level. And that's enough for me. We'll hear from more of me later. Over to you, Pam.
All right, thank you so much. I'm Pamela Boozer Strutter. I'm the District Three Board of Education member, and I was the co-chair of the Climate Change Action Plan Focus Work Group with Joseph Jakuta, and that work would not have been possible without Kate Wonderlick and Donald Bell serving on the committee. So about four, four of us and Ramon, five of us were on the, that work group, and then, and then we are so excited to have new members join us under this new Oversight Committee. So I'm super excited. This is like one of my happiest places to be as a Board of Education member, so I just want to thank all of you for for making the commitment to this ad hoc committee. Thanks.
How about we go over to Director Morrison next?
Hi, I'm Director Dorothy Morrison. I'm Dorothy Morrison, the, the new director for the Office of Sustainability and Resiliency, and also charged to, you know, move on with this work that everyone has contributed so devotedly to. So I'm excited to be on board and you have my all.
Thank you, Director Morrison. Mr. Bell.
Greetings, everyone. Donald Bell. I'm an environmental outreach educator with the William Schmidt Center, our outdoor and environmental education center for Prince George County Public Schools. And as Board Member Boozer Strutter stated, a member of the initial committee to help develop the Climate Change Action Plan that has really been a landmark for not just Prince George County, but leading the way for other school systems in Maryland and across the country to do this work. So I appreciate the invitation.
Not a problem, Mr. Myers.
Mr. Myers. Sure. I'm Timothy Meyer. I am the longtime PTO President at Mount Rainier Elementary. One of the many green schools that we have here in PG CPS. I always say we're proud to have more green schools in the county than anywhere else in the state. And I also have been very active over the last couple of years on walkability and safe routes to schools. So that's, I believe, one of the reasons why, one of the things I can help contribute to this group is the tie between promoting walkability within PG CPS and the impact that that can have on climate change.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jakuta, and then we'll go to Ms. Wonderlick.
Hi, I'm Joseph Jakuta. I'm a proud parent of two Prince Georgean school students at Robert Goddard Montessori. Lead volunteer for the Climate Parents of Prince Georges. Were advocating for a hundred percent clean energy schools in Prince George's County, and then also was honored to co-chair with Board Member Boozer Strutter. The Action Plan Work Group that developed the initial app, action plan that's being implemented now.
Hi, I'm Kate Wonderlick. I am a former PTO President for Caesar Chavez Dual Spanish Immersion School. I have a kindergartner and a fourth grader, and I was on some of the mentioned committees. And in my interest and enthusiasm is around building climate curriculum into the into the school system, both up and down, and being able to leverage lessons learned and best practices. So it's fun and easy and tool-based for students and teachers.
Thank you, Ms. Wonderlick. We'll go to Commissioner Gomez, sorry, Commissioner Gomez, and then we'll go to Mr. Noto.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Jassy Gomez. I sit on the Commission for the City of District Heights. And we are in District Seven, so I really appreciate School Board Member Harris inviting me to sit on this committee. We do a lot of work with District Heights Elementary in North Forestville to just provide wraparound services where we can. So I'm just very excited to be here to support not only our District Seven schools, but the county at large. We do have a sustainability committee in District Heights, so that is one of our platforms that we've been standing up for the past couple of years. So it's great just to tie in some of the work that we're doing in the city with what we're also doing with our school board. So happy to be here.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is David Noto. I am a former PG CPS teacher. I taught at Wise High School from twenty seventeen through twenty twenty-two. I just graduated this past year with a master's degree of public health with a concentration in nutrition from George Washington University, thank you very much, and have a pretty extensive background in sustainability, specifically as it relates to agriculture. Hence the concentration in nutrition. And I am very pleased to be here. On a weird, fun note, Christina Quack and I went to college together in Tennessee. So the chances of us both ending up on this committee is super unlikely, but also really cool.
Small world. We'll go to Ms. Novick. I'm just doing it in order on my screen, Ms. Novick, and then Mr. Palencia.
Hello, everyone. I'm happy to be here too. I appreciate the invitation. I'm the gifted program coordinator at Kenmore Middle School. Longtime educator in Prince George's County, have three grandchildren who are currently students in Prince George's County. One at Greenbelt Elementary, one at College Park Academy, and one a senior at Eleanor Roosevelt High School. I guess I'm kind of got my edge in here because I had the two students come to the board meeting and really speak on behalf of the students at Kenmore Middle School at that time about their interest in seeing the Climate Change Action Plan passed, for better word, and they're those, many of those students are still here and quite excited about that. I also work with Chesapeake Bay Foundation as a TEL educator, so I do a lot of work in the summers, and on May sixteenth, I'll be with Chesapeake Bay Foundation on Port Isabel Island with Wendy Rougey, also works at Kenmore. So I've kind of she doesn't come to meetings, but she'll also be some energy, and I'm really pleased to be working with Donald Bell. Appreciate the work he's done with young people in our community to help them find their voice and find their pathway. So thanks.
Hello, everyone. Ramon Palencia Calvo. I'm the Deputy Director at the Maryland Legal Conservation Waters, statewide nonprofit environmental organization where we work to pass a comprehensive policy to protect Maryland's environment and sustainability. At Maryland L C B, I also direct our CHISPAP program, which is a community-based Latino outreach program, and we work with many families in Prince George's County. One of the things that we have been doing for a number of years is work on a school bus electrification at the local state and national level. And I was a member of the initial work group that developed the Climate Action Plan, and it is a privilege and a pleasure to be here with all of you today, and I look forward to this work. Thank you.
Definitely. There's been a lot of exciting news for Ramon and his group over the past few months, and a lot of work to still be done. And thank you, Ms. Novick, for what you're doing with, with our students, and thank you for being here. Speaking of students, I'm gonna go to you, Ms. Villar, and then after that, it'll be Mr. Thompson.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sophia Villar. I hope you guys can hear me. My connection is acting up. Okay. So I just want to thank Dr. Harris again for inviting me onto the committee. I was invited based off my position as an ambassador for Exelon, and so basically, as an ambassador, my job is to go out into my community and teach young middle school students or elementary students about the importance of energy and, you know, the way it works and helping them understand. And I have my activity book right here, just to show you guys basically what I have to work with. And I have like activities for them to work with and all that, and also I have to spread awareness about the importance of like climate change and how it's impacting our planet right now. So that's just it.
Ms. Thompson.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Dr. Harris, and and all the team for putting this great group together. Pamela's been Boozer Strutter is all over the place, and she always shows up and has been a great connector. I live in Upper Marlboro. I actually I'm the CEO of the Greater Washington Region Clean Cities. We cover D C, Maryland, and Virginia. I also sit on the XCOM Committee for the Sierra Club. I used to be a state senator in New York. I was first African American to chair the Media Environmental Conservation. And I used to chair the Education Committee too, so, and as well, when I was on the City Council too. And so just glad to be here, and we've been working with the school district on, on their clean school bus stuff. In fact, I'm going on a tour on Monday of the fleet facility, which needs a lot of work. Needs a lot of work, so I'm going to actually tour that, and we work on helping to get grants and all different type of things for clean transportation and also building, really into building stuff and workforce development. We want to get these young people some jobs. Also, I want to thank Donald Bell for being a great resource. We have a Future Green Leaders Program where we go into schools and talk about environmental stewardship and green careers and financial literacy. So I want to thank him for being a great bridge to the school district as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we'll go to Ms. Quack, followed by Mr. Roush.
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for inviting me to be part of the committee. And also great to see David again after many, many years. Great to be connected with you all. I am the proud parent of two young PG CPS students, one in kindergarten and one in fourth grade. And I'd like to think that that's the reason why I'm here, but I also have a day job, and that is leading two small women-owned companies working on the intersections of education and climate change. We work not only on generating research and evidence to support policy advocacy around climate and education intersections, but we also do and work on organizational capacity building within our education system to ensure the people who run the education system have the climate confidence to address climate issues in the work that they do, no matter where in the education system. We also work on curriculum and teaching and material development, both at the national level as well as globally, especially in developing country contexts. So that's sort of the day job, and my outside of day job has also just begun with some of the kids coming back home from school. So you might see some, some faces pop in and out. I'm glad to be here. Thank you so much.
And I'm Ben Roush. I am, uh, let's see, principal at F S I. That's the day job, an engineering, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection firm. I am a licensed mechanical and fire protection engineer and focus quite a lot on high-performance buildings, net zero buildings, or to the buildings of the future. Majority of our firm is, is on the West Coast. I'm, I'm in Maryland, and, and Joseph invited me to sit in with y'all to speak specifically to high-performance building and the, the realm of possible, and we know each other from advocacy work on green building legislation at the state level. From, I guess, from climate solutions now and then from this year as well.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, sir. And last but surely not least, our administrative staff here. Mr. Fitzpatrick, did you want to say anything? And Ms. Adeline?
Of course. Thank you all so much for being here. Thank you to everyone for watching. I'm Revel D. Fitzpatrick. My pronouns are he, him, his, and I'm the Director for the Prince George County Board of Education.
Hi, everyone. Cindy Adlan. I'm one of the Administrative Secretary in the Board Office, and I'll be supporting you guys.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. As you see, we have a powerhouse of different individuals, different skill sets, just collaborative comes to the table to, to help facilitate the work of this ad hoc committee. For the sake of the community, just a bit of a background around this committee, the Climate Change Action Plan Ad Hoc Committee is a resource to PG CPS in its efforts to successfully implement the, our C cap plan, as you'll, you'll hear us refer to it as. The, the committee, as you see, includes different individuals from diverse expertise. Some folks have board experience, some sit on and their full-time roles in these things. Some have degrees and backgrounds in this, but it's a combination of these, of these different skill sets to meet our eight recommendation areas. Those eight recommendation areas are support for environmental justice through climate curriculum and training, reduction of carbon footprint for PG CPS buildings. Our, we need to commit to renewable energy sources for our net zero emissions future. Commit to low-carbon school transportation, reduce food waste and grow climate-friendly food. Commit to sustainable materials management and procurement. Commit to climate resilient land management and lead by example to support transformational change. As I noted, the ad hoc committee will be in, in its peers as a force multiplier for our C cap implementation. Provide guidance and recommendations and resources to the PG CPS Superintendent, the Director of Sustainability, who you see online here, Director Morrison, and the C cap operational committee, along with our other partners. We, our goal is to engage with stakeholders through this in the process to help deepen our investments in, in, in the success of our C cap plan and, and to hope to extend and bring PG CPS as student and stakeholders, as employees into a, a much, much brighter future, and ultimately have it aligned with our PG CPS strategic plan for transfer, our PG CPS Transplantation Two Thousand Six Equity and Excellence Plan as well. And so our committee works from, from present until, I think we're until twenty twenty-six or so. And then that twenty twenty-six time will be reevaluated based on our, based on our priorities and where we have, how far we've gotten with implementation. So that's a bit, that's a bit about us, a bit what we do. Great introductions from everyone. Again, I am so ecstatic for you all to be here today. This is a long, a long time coming, so I'm glad we got everyone on the call. And, and last thing for the community, you also see some additional student faces start to trickle in over the, the coming months. We'll have additional student representatives on the board, on the committee as well. So we're excited about that, excited to get them involved. All right, jumping forward in our agenda. We'll receive a, a sustainability report from our Director of Sustainability. I'll give the floor to you, Director Morrison, for a brief presentation or for brief comments. And you're on me.
I'm so sorry I keep, you know, forgetting to mute myself. Yeah, I was just saying, I, I wish I had a presentation for you all. I don't, but I just kind of just talked real, at a very high level. So again, wanted to thank the board and everyone who worked diligently in coming up with Climate Action Plan before I even started. By my background, I only started just a little bit under six months ago in this new role. And since then, kind of been working with the whole team, the administration team, the board members, various partners, just to try to get things going. And so what I'm actually also going to do is I will put it in the chat as well. It's to give you all a link to climate action reports. So basically, we are required to do twice a year, provide a report on how we're doing. And we just released the January report, and so all that is available. I'm trying to see if I could.
I don't think.
I don't have, I don't have the. I can't share.
No, so we, we don't have a chat feature, but if you email it to me while you, while you're talking.
Now, am I, can I share a screen? Oops.
Yeah, that's even better.
Yeah, we can see your screen.
Know what I just did.
So we can see your Zoom screen, so we're seeing your browser.
Okay, so let me see if I could maybe just know, let me just put, can you see this?
Yeah.
Can folks see this? Okay. So I'm just going to leave this up here because I, you know, I know you just said it, Dr. Harris, but I just wanted to put it up there so folks can kind of see it. So what we've been doing, so we have monthly meetings around these priority areas, which Dr. Harris had mentioned. And I guess the best way to say this, so we have what we call a rolling agenda. So all in all, we have like maybe over, I don't know, two, three hundred pages worth of, of things. That's why I said it'll be easy to just kind of link up. But going through this real quickly, so here we have the eight priority areas, right? It's a very, very comprehensive action plan. Each of these priority areas have what we are calling, I guess, operational action items. For the first one, we have at least six, and then for the building carbon footprint, we have about eleven. All in all, there's a total of about, I want to say about fifty-seven action items. And some of these action items are then subdivided into what we are calling, I guess, mitigation areas, operational areas, as well as adaptation areas. So as you can tell, it's very, very comprehensive. So I think maybe the best way to do this, to not take up a whole lot of time, is to just give you a little bit of highlights in, in some of the areas that we've done work in, and give you the opportunity to kind of drill down into the details through the link that I'll, that I'll provide through Dr. Harris. So with regards to the climate curriculum and training, I know Donald is, is here, and you know, you can feel free to weigh in. But we've been moving along with that, doing a lot of wonderful things in terms of developing, working with the students and helping to develop a climate curriculum around climate change. And so we are actually, I'm trying to, if I get the dates wrong, excuse me, I know Donald is working on there's a student summit that's coming up this April. I believe there's going to be two. One's going to be at Booit State on, I guess, the twenty-fifth and the twenty-ninth, thereabout. This, this group has also come up with what we're calling environmental principles. So that centers around things like equity and environmental justice. And so again, these are really high points. There's a whole lot of stuff that's been done in this area. I'm just touching on Eric and things that we've done. With regards to the carbon footprint reduction, Jamie Alston, who some of you may already know and have worked with, is working again diligently in, in terms of trying to get us to have data that we can track our progress along the way. I believe it's called Portfolio Manager. So we got a grant back in twenty twenty-two to, that's helping us to sort of implement and kickstart this data gathering. We're also planning to have an energy dashboard in schools, so the schools can see how they're doing in terms of the energy usage. The same thing with regards to renewable energy sources. We have our new buildings, a blueprint, school buildings that's being developed through P threes. And those are coming ready with things like solar ready, solar and E V charging ready. And the goal here is, as we build new schools, we are making those schools green buildings essentially. With regards to the fourth area, which is the low-carbon school transportation, we are trying to increase our E V fleets, electric school buses. So I think right now we have about twenty total electric buses, and we recently applied for a grant for an additional fifteen. We haven't heard back yet. We're keeping our fingers crossed that we get those. We have the E V charging station right now. Unfortunately, we don't have a full blown-out infrastructure for these chargers, but we do have these mobile chargers that we are using for the buses. So that is sort of a hindrance. We're also looking at ways to, I guess, modify our school route, so these buses will make more frequent stops because that helps with the regenerative charging of this, of the school buses. So that's an example of what we're doing in that area. In terms of food waste reduction, we have about, I believe, before I started, there was about twenty schools, and there's an additional twelve schools that have been added on in the last six to eight months in terms of composting. Sustainable Materials Management and Procurement, there again, we are, there's a lot of information. Oops. Uh-oh. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do that. Let me just click that off. Okay. So where was I? Sustainable Materials Management and Procurement. Okay, so in this space, what we're trying to do here is hold on a second. I'm sorry. I missed my, we were talking about the resilient land management. So with, we got the resilient land management, we are, we've done an inventory of the green infrastructure, and we're working on things like stormwater management. We're also working that into the school curriculum so that the, so that the students can learn about stormwater management and what it takes to do resilient land management. With regards to sustainable material management and procurement, we are looking at language that we're putting in every contract as we procure things that are more environmentally friendly and environmentally preferable. So we have that going. And we have also tree planting that we are working on. We have like, I made my handwriting. I apologize for that. We are promoting recycling. And we are also, and this is a, this is kind of a sticking point with regards to the turf fields versus natural grass. A lot of the students want turf fields, but you know, it's not the most environmentally friendly thing. So we are working on transitioning those sports fields to natural, natural grass. With regards to leading by example and transformational change, that is one of those sort of catch-all things that just says we are going to do better. So things like, you know, staffing up. So the new department, Department of Sustainability and Resilience is an example of that, you know, taking that leadership role to create this position, which will then serve in an oversight collaborative role to make sure that all these items of the Climate Action Plan gets implemented. So with that, there's a lot of stuff here. So what I'm going to do is I want to save some time to talk about an upcoming leadership summit, which actually falls under, I guess, one, priority area one. So on. Which actually falls under um, I guess, one priority area one. So on. The seventeenth of April, we will be hosting what we're calling a climate ready leadership summit. Um, the plan is to have the superintendent uh attend and he will give opening remarks. Um, following that, we will have um somewhat of a a fireside chat um to talk about sort of what's happened in the past. Uh, so we'll have um. Board member uh Struthers, uh Boozer Strutter would would help us along that journey of how we came to being. And then we'll have uh Dr. Coleman uh say a few words about what we're currently doing right now. And um I believe I might be on that panel too, to talk about where we're hoping to be, you know, in the future. Uh, following that, uh, we will have presentations from peer uh, I guess, uh, school districts. And the goal with that is to to share successes. So lessons learned. Um, cause we all, you know, we know we learn best from our peers. So that would be an opportunity to hear what some of the other school districts are. And then we want to take some time to sort of do a roll up your sleeve uh type of session where we talk about. Uh, key issues and things that may be um hindering us from implementing the plan. And then we will uh gather up all that information. We'll have um professional facilitators who will help us facilitate that session. And then do some sort of a synthesis report uh about. I guess the um the summit. And I get the the key takeaway is for us to have, well, a couple of things uh to be, have renewed vigor, hopefully, because a lot of folks have changed. Over time, and we don't have, I mean, the administration has changed, have a new superintendent, we have um. Uh, new personnel. So just an opportunity to to let them know all the good work we've done and just to hopefully be re- rejuvenated and moving forward. So um, so yeah, so that is unfortunately, we could only have seventy people for that. So some some folks. On here may have gotten invites, others um may not have, but uh rest assured, you would know all that happened in the meeting. Cause like I said, we plan to have. A synthesis report that would then go out to the public and be made available to the public. So I know I said that pretty fast because I was trying to get everything in. Are there any questions with what I've said um so far?
Thanks for that, uh, Director Morrison. Yeah, colleagues, if you if you do have questions, please feel free to raise your hand. Uh, we'll be limiting questions to two rounds. Each round will be two and a half minutes per person. Um, if we want to do a third round, we can extend that. Just want to be respectful of folks' time here. And yeah, see, is Kate's hand up? Yeah, Kate's hand up.
Yeah. Hi, um, I heard you mention the um each school being able to monitor their energy use sense, usage. Uh, when, when and how will that be?
Yeah, yeah, that's that's the question. So right now, we are in the process of gathering the data. Now, it's it's a lengthy process. I know Jamie's been, you know, working on that for quite a while. While I can't give you an exact timeframe, I want to say maybe within the next twelve months. Because right now we're getting that uh data from the utility company and the utility company then gives it to a third party. I believe it's the Bith group or so, and then they sort of help us to sort of analyze that. And then that will go towards like a a dashboard which we can monitor. Cause right now I don't even think that we. We have a sense of a baseline. So we need to, we always have to start with a baseline in order to see the progress. So. Unfortunately, I can only give you a guesstimate of maybe about twelve months, and I hope. You know, Jamie's not gonna cut my throat off for this, but that's just like a rough estimate.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Any other questions from the committee? Sorry, I can't see everyone. So please use the raised hand.
Trying to, let me try to see if I could scroll down and see if there's any hands raised.
I see one.
Okay, Joseph?
Uh, I I had a question and a comment. Um, the, I'll I'll start with the comment. Um, I'm excited to see the report uh that's gonna come out at the meeting on April seventeenth. Um, I I hope we certainly can uh get briefed on it and find. Ways to help with the road box that you're discussing because I I I think that that was one of the. Um, important uh reasons for us to meet to help with those issues where we can. Um, and as far as the question, actually, it goes back to the 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 building energy uh performance uh. Dashboard. I did notice that there is another dashboard system that was being created for other purposes. I think it was like truancy and. Um, and other school statistics that was sort of a general purpose uh dashboard. I was just curious if this. Once the energy information's available, if it'll be integrated with that. So it's uh more in front of the general public.
Yes, I'm not familiar with the dashboard that you're, the truancy dashboard. Now, is your question, when you say integrated, are you saying, is it gonna be? Maybe like that, like maybe the way this is the data?
The way the website was set up, it just sort of is like a one stop shop of all the different dashboards the P G C P S has available. So. I guess it's not so much integrated like like the data's in there, but it's just more like when you go to the landing page, you're you're able to see various dashboards.
Yeah, well, thanks. Thanks for sharing that with me because for me, that would make perfect sense. Uh, when you talk about one stop shop, it will make perfect sense if there's other dashboard there. To include the energy dashboard there as well. So. Uh, definitely. And you know, even within the climate action plan, we are. I mean, right now, if you go to the website, I think there's only one live link, and that's the one for, I believe it's the stormwater management uh infrastructure. So the 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 goal is to have all those um hyperlink for the all eight areas be activated so that, you know. Uh, again, that's another one stop shop. When you go there, you should be able to click on it. And unfortunately, I can't, um, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time trying to find it. But um uh you will see when I send you the link that um, you know, it takes you to the page where. Um, you have the hyperlink. So hopefully, when we have all those hyperlinks active, it'll be really awesome because then that way. Folks can track what's happening in each and every one of these priority areas. So that's the goal.
So Director Morrison, you mind if I add a bit to that? Sorry to jump, I'll expand on the answer a little bit. So um, Joseph, in reference to the data dashboard you're talking about, you're talking about our um. Uh, our C S I data dashboard, which is critical, critical something indicators, success, success indicators, success indicators. Um, and so though that dashboard slide is a forward facing dashboard, um, that's accessible to the general public, but that's essentially married to our four outcome goals. That we have, and we can, we can still see your screen, Director Morrison, by the way.
I know. I just, I was trying to get the climate action change, so I'm trying to, there we go.
And so um, and and so, yeah, I I guess the question is, will that be a forward facing energy dashboard? Um, when it is completely rolled out and will it be featured on that same dashboard site so that people can just immediately see it? Uh, so we'll take that action. We'll get back to you about that, Joseph. Uh, and hopefully, hopefully, that's all right.
So can everybody still see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So um, so basically, let me see what's the best way to do this. Okay, so that we don't look at one. So there you go, the climate action. Let's try this. Okay, so by the way, since this is, since this is up, this is the link I'm gonna send out. So um, this is the most recent report, um, the media report that I told you about. And so. And then six months prior to that, you have that. So we have a one, two, three, about three reports that you guys can drill drill. Down into to see what all has been done. So when you click on this particular dashboard. Um, these are the eight priority areas, um, one to eight. And then right now, we only have. Uh, seven uh commit to land management that kind of shows us. Um, that's activated right now. So hopefully, within the next, as the months go by, we will have the remainder of the seven activated. So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that. Let's move to uh Ms. Qua.
Hi, thanks um so much for the updates and everything. I had a quick question. Um, uh, kind of thinking of a little bit more at a meta meta level, um, whether there are any plan, any communications plans with some of the work going on, especially like with the leadership summit that you had just mentioned. I know at a national scale, there's quite a lot of interest in learning from uh counties, cities, states that are doing this kind of work and. Would be a wonderful opportunity to highlight what P G C P S is doing um and potentially even uh be a way to. Gather more resources via that sort of publicity. So just curious if that's in the agenda.
Yes, definitely agree with that, that we need to do more marketing of the wonderful work that we're doing. Um. I have had conversation, just one conversations with our communications team about it. And by the way, you know, this, the summit, the leadership summit, we, it's gonna be covered. We are hoping to have it recorded. Um, we don't know if we'll have media presence or not. Uh, we're planning on having some key partners there who can also, you know, spread the word. And so, yeah, we have, we do have a a sustainability and resilience webpage. It's not, there's not a lot of it um on, a lot of stuff on there right now. Hopefully, when we. Get some more staffing in, we can kind of get that rolling. But um, but yeah, we need to, we need to be able to put more things out there. We need to use social media more to an advantage and have like LinkedIn sites and. And tweets and all the wonderful stuff to spread the word. Um, we also talked about having, um, you know, live behind. So when we go to conferences. We can like have a sort of a summary snapshot of all the wonderful things we're doing, maybe with a Q R code that's gonna take you directly to the website for more information. Cause I think that. That's gonna probably be a primary tool is our website. Um. So, yeah, so we're not gonna be coming up with a lot of print material because you, we all know that it gets outdated, especially since we're doing so much uh so many different things. So. So, yeah, so that's the plan to um to ramp up our 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 marketing aspect of this. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, board member comes. Booze Strutter, go ahead.
So you're on me, Pam.
I'm sorry, I'll wait until after other committee members and and follow up at the end.
Okay, so I think it's Sophia.
Yes, I I had a comment, actually. This was um about the energy usage. So. I think you guys already said something about this, but I was doing research about that when I was reviewing the PDF. And um when it comes to like monitoring, like the energy usage in our schools and everything, I was think, I found something about like. Implementing some type of like energy monitor, monitoring system into like, maybe like the school's database or something like that. And like. You know, the those types of systems comes with like software platforms. And so those platforms of like. They analyze and um provide insights to the like the type of consumption pattern. So I think that's like one way we could. Track that.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah. And you know, like I said, we all working with the Bith group. Um, they, I know they did something similar with the state in terms of tracking their. They went to, I think they were tracking every single state agency that was, you know, um. Using energy and they were able to sort of like shame some agencies over the others because for the most part, they made it publicly aware. So you can see which the agencies were doing, were trending in the right direction. And you can see the ones that weren't doing so well. So I mean, not to obviously, we're not trying to shame anybody, but it's good to. To be able to have those kinds of metrics and data to make progress. I I don't know if there was somebody else's hand up, let me just.
Director, it's just me, it's Dr. Harris. Um, so just, I guess a follow up for, for two questions. The first, can you, can you talk to a group a bit about? Um, your uh inner group with P G C P S, uh, the implementation group, how often you meet? Um, I know you said it's often a kind of a sprint style.
Right, mm-hmm. So now you're talking about the 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 group, the internal, the administration. Okay, so um, so we have these month, so there's a, there's a lot of meetings, okay? So we meet once a month, the full complement of the, I guess, eight priority areas. So each of these areas have um what we call leads, right? So these are the folks who are responsible to make sure they rally around everybody else um that's part of the team to do the work. And so um during our monthly meeting, when we have everybody, it's really just a report out, right? So that's a time when. You know, we have a representative from each of the priority areas talk about what they've done. So in between those meetings, so those meetings are monthly, in between those meetings, we have what we call um I guess subcommittee meetings, right? So these are, for example, subcommittee. One would be a climate curriculum and training. Uh, subcommittee two would be building carbon footprint reduction, right? So. They meet and they they sort of do the real work, right? They sort of meet and they may even have like subgroups that uh work on specific projects. And whatever happens in those meetings get rolled up to the larger meeting, right? And we also have what we call rolling agenda and we have um update tables. So, and I'm trying to think of this, if there's a way to share this with the public so you all could see the volume of work that's being done. Um, so. Every month, we clear out, um, I'm trying to sort of describe this because it's not in front of me, but we clear out the update column, right? And so that allows new information to come in. So every month, we have about maybe fifteen pages of like, you know, work that's being done. And then the next month, we have another fifteen pages. So that has easily ballooned into this voluminous thing. Maybe we can figure out a way to. Um, archive or sort of like bookmark things where you can go to certain months, you can see what's happening. Cause every month, something new is happening. So. Again, I don't know if you're familiar with the rolling agenda, but that's kind of what we have. And um we'll figure out a way to maybe. Have that on our website so that we can show the public can kind of go there and 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 be able to see all the, all the great work that's being done.
Okay, and what I'll try to do, because my my time is up there, what I, what I'll try to do, what we will be doing in these meetings moving forward is, this is more of a general meeting to understand the priorities for the community, things like that. Moving forward, we we have very targeted agendas to say, hey, this is this group, uh, this week, uh, committee will be talking about these three priorities, what we've done.
Exactly, right, mm-hmm. Yeah, then that way we can go into more details. Yeah, exactly, yeah, mm-hmm.
The last thing I say to kind of bounce off what Sophia was saying was, it'd be good to kind of hear about the. The software packages you have identified and what we may potentially be using for those outward facing dashboards. But that's.
Yeah, I'll I'll put that down here. So I'll follow up with Jamie. And she's our energy um management analyst, so. We can get that information to you. So you want to know like the specific software packages, right?
Yeah, just an idea of which which ones you're perusing at the time. Um, we can go to the next person in the queue, Mr. Roush.
Yeah, very quick note, the uh state energy database is publicly accessible. So if you Google, I know we can't post anything here, but. You Google Maryland State Energy Database, it'll get, it'll get you right there. And it is worth clicking into the the most startling like thing, I think, is that they spend six million dollars a day on energy at the state level.
Yeah, it's pretty high, mm-hmm, yeah. And that's what, you know, I I believe so Jamie's working with M E A, the Maryland Energy Administration. So I'm I'm thinking it's gonna look something like that. Um, at least initially, because we have a grant to do it, and then thereafter, we might have to look for additional funding to maintain it on our own. But right now, we have, um, you know, we did get a grant to do the initial, you know, data gathering and just kind of get things started up.
Thank you. Uh, we got one more hand up, Mr., yeah, Mr. My.
To Mr. Myers, yeah.
Uh, first, I just wanted, uh, thank you, Dr. Harris. Um, and for Director Morrison, I wanted to say we are one of the twelve new composting schools this year. And I had to report that it's been a uh huge success. Uh, the teachers and students have been very excited about the program. So we're happy to be one of those twelve new composting schools.
Awesome, congratulations.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you for the work you do.
Uh, well, I had, I had two quick questions. I'll do, I'll just jump in with the first one, and if we don't have time for the second. Um, on the low carbon transportation, um, I was checking before the board meeting or before this meeting that. Right now, my school is the only one in P G C P S signed up for Walk, Bike and Roll to School Day coming up in May. And I was just wondering if there's anything that P G C P S can do institutionally to try to help facilitate more schools being involved in an event like that. Uh, because it's one of the ways that we can really help raise, raise, we've noticed a pattern at our school, uh, Mount Rainier Elementary of just. Every time we put on the event, there are certain families who will walk for just that one day, and then they'll find that they, that they'll find that they enjoy it, and they'll find that they. Uh, maybe they don't do it every day, but they do it a couple days. Used to. Um, and I'm also happy to pitch in and say that if any schools need training on how to pull off the event, I'm happy to. To do that as well. But that's, my first question was just, is there any way to have P G C P S put a little bit of institutional. Support behind a, an event like that. And the second part was on stormwater management. Um, is there any plan to have P G C P S go school by school and really do a stormwater assessment of. Whether it's big picture or like large projects or even just some small interventions that could be done at different schools around the county.
So are you requesting or are you requesting that, you know, we we go from school to school and look at their stormwater infrastructure? Is that, is that your question and?
Uh, just i- is there any, is there any plan underway to be, to have the county go school by school? Because right now I feel like it's happening. Or there you have certain slightly more activist groups like ours who take on projects like that, but there's a lot of schools where they just might not have. Have a voice, will, you know, or someone who's able to buy for a nonprofit. buy for nonprofit grants and things like that. So county support would be helpful on that.
Yeah, I mean, definitely. I mean, I think something like that, because I mean, I I I know going taking this back, I know what I'm going to get. It's like, you know, it's going to be about funding and resources. Um, I think from my personal perspective, I think when you have like this, because this kind of is a very big school system, right? Um, I think it's really a matter of looking at um a fair and equitable way to prioritize, like for example, schools that may be prone to flooding, right? Um, schools that may have failing infrastructure, right? So maybe uh targeting those schools first and making that a priority and eventually, you know, getting to, you know, other schools. Now, I think if the funding is there and the resources are there, I mean, you know, by all means, we should do it. But I think maybe that's probably um trying to be as honest as possible. That's probably the most feasible way to do it is to to figure out a way to prioritize in an equitable way which schools we we hit first with that. But I will definitely take it back.
And and Director Morrison, I can, I can add on um a little bit uh regarding some of the efforts associated with stormwater. Uh, this is not comprehensive because there there are additional efforts uh like in the facilities department. But one of the um, one of the programs that we've worked with uh our center as well as facilities, um, as well as our community stakeholders and partners is a program called Treating and Teaching. And it's been in existence for the last several years, I think at least the last six years, maybe. Um, and what that, what that program does is look countywide as schools in stormwater, um, campuses and infrastructure to then choose schools each year that get best management practices um installed on their school grounds. And then associated with that um treating and teaching program, several of our schools, I I I definitely more than twenty have received outdoor classrooms um as a part of the that program as well. And so that one in its north, central, south, right, that program has um implemented several best management practices on school grounds to help treat the stormwater uh on the grounds. And it's changed over the years in terms of it it uh for I think four or five years. Uh, it was based on um schools applying um to be, to get the the, let's say, the outdoor classroom component. Um, but typically like the initial selection of schools was based on um engineers surveying the school properties and then seeing, you know, where we could treat large amounts of stormwater um to to help, right? Like not just a school system, uh, but the Prince George County Department of Environment to help them re- reach the EPA goals associated with treating stormwater as well. So that that program is funded through the Clean Water Partnership. Um, and uh, you know, each year we have a few more schools that get those improvements um added on and it's continuing to move forward.
Thanks for that, Donald.
And I'll just add, I understand it all. We can't do it all at once. We have a a lot of schools in the county to cover. I was just trying to ask if there was any, what the plan was to try to go school by school, even if it's over a long time.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, yeah. Um, I thought I saw another hand up. Um, was it Beth? I guess, yes.
I actually just had a comment. Mr. Mayor, we're Timothy Mayor, right?
Uh, Meyer, but yes.
Meyer.
Um, did you ask about getting that in increasing the number of schools to participate in the walking to school project?
Yes, that was, that was the question was just what can PG CPS do institutionally to try to help promote it among schools? Because I think a lot of schools may not even know that it that that particularly.
It was a big project when I was in Greenbelt, but the county council has just started that safe passage project. And I wonder how much we can combine our work with um Jolene Ivy and her team that's doing the safe passage work. No use work in parallel. We can work together on that kind of thing. And I'm sure Jolene Ivy, who was a Kemore parent, um, would be interested in getting all of that together. Um, so that could be something just to consider, how can we collaborate with county council? Uh, city councils. I mean, I'm sure we talk Greenbelt and Hyattsville and other councils into really promoting this as well. And then all that works not on us um for those things.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for saying that. I mean, that's a very good point to bring up because this work is so enormous that it will take that that partnership and combining and and trying not to duplicate efforts um to the extent that we can amplify our work by, you know, by sharing resources, finding out what's happening at the county level and the state level and the federal level and even private sector. So um that's going to be a large part of what we try to do to get all the work done. Um, it just, I don't know, something popped up. I don't know. I guess it was. You should have your hand up, Beth, or?
I think she's done. You got a board member Boozer Struthers and then.
Exactly.
All right, I'm gonna wait again because now I I I see Commissioner has uh her hand up.
Yeah, I'd be, I I'd be interested to get some more details on walk to school day. Uh, District Heights Elementary is very much in the community and most of we don't have buses. So I mean, I, a lot of the children already walk, so it's something that's happening. And if we can build an event around that, that's kind of countywide. I'd love to explore that with District Heights Elementary. When is it?
Uh, it is May eighth. I can, I can go back to the invite from this meeting and send you all the information.
Would you? Okay. Yeah, great. Thank you.
Okay, now, board member Booze Struthers.
All right, thank, thank you so much. Um, I did, I I have a lot of notes now, but I, uh, when I first raised my hand, I did want to just acknowledge um Director Morrison and acknowledge like all of PG CPS because that was the list of things is just scratching the surface, like the 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 pace that this is moving is almost too fast to keep up with. And that sort of database and communications piece is so critical, like I could, you know, I I'm not sure, I don't think Kate said too much about Cesar Chavez's dual Spanish immersion actually creating this uh hundreds of thousands of dollars investments in the land there for a specific climate curriculum with the outdoor classrooms and the in the stormwater management and everything going on there. So call out Kate for that huge project. And then we also have Casey Trees working with Carol Highlands Elementary to plant trees in a few weeks. And so there's all these partners
Yeah.
moving really fast. And it's, I mean, as a board of education member who's so deep in this work and realized that we handed over to the former CEO, this massive plan. It, I, the the pace and the fidelity of of the of what is happening, I think is I'm just so grateful. I just need to have a PG CPS grateful moment about the um of what everyone is doing in the system that every division at the top level is uh all the division leaders, the chiefs are in this conversation every month. This is not, this is as deep as the strategic plan where our critical success indicators are around uh academics, climate and culture. And and it does include some infrastructure. There was some overlap. Um, but there's um, but the, you know, just the um, the depth of this is is actually quite remarkable. So I just, I just wanted to say that from a board member perspective, uh, what I, what I'm seeing, you know, you know, now that we are all a collective oversight, um, you know, and and how we all see it so differently. And I'm so, so grateful for, you know, what, um, you know, like Tim Meyer joining us with these intersections, like, uh, you know, like Beth, you just noted those safe passages intersections that we've been talking about from a walkability and, you know, the the that this is just that our teachers and our students now breathe a lot of emissions on their way to school that really when we had a functional crossing guard program, they did not. And it is, and I'm going to say, we we are about to as a board, we have asked Superintendent House to fix the late buses. And frankly, part of what's going to happen is there's going to be an increased parent transportation system that we haven't even named or applied rules to. And as a board members, we really need, and this kind of work lets us look at that systems change and be ready for it from a climate action, student health perspective that we didn't have in the system two years be before, two years ago, like that just wasn't as um, all these um intersectionalities, we just didn't, you know, operate that way. So um, you know, like even this county council work that uh Councilmember Fisher put forward for this task force. Um, Tim was, Tim and the Safe Passages parents sprung into action after the um, you know, tragic incident at Riverdale Elementary that led to this. And and, you know, like, I'm just using Tim as example that he's had a whole bunch of hats on to see this intersectionality. And so that is where we're deep in this. And and I, and I know I went over my time, but I just have to say the number one thing that I I used to talk about in these task force meetings is all of this is in the context of fully funded budgets, fully funded capital budgets from the county council and the Maryland General Assembly and the health of the blueprint for Maryland's future and the fun can funding and continued work because none of this, all the work we are doing from a climate action perspective is dependent on that, that funding and that our collective advocacy to fully fund our public school systems in Maryland, which is always under threat and which we know the blueprint for Maryland's future stirred up a lot of funding conversations. But if we are, if that starts to fall apart and our system is, you know, having to make up for loss of community schools funds and other important programs around our academics and our climate and culture, this piece of the work is going to be, is going to be harder. But I think a lot of what we're doing is actually helping to solve those problems. And and doing it in some ways even around an economic budgeting um piece of redirecting mu- funds. So I just want to say that, you know, like, like today, as a board member, I am deep in this work on climate action. But the, until this county council passes the budget, I'm going to be a very outspoken board member on a fully funded budget from the county council. And to not mess with our uh construction plan, our capital projects team has has very detailed plan. They've added in all the climate action, but we have to keep that plan funded. And and so that is, that is where you're going to see, like, we have these layers of advocacy that that you'll see me and and Tim and others, um, Dr. Harris kind of have to be out front on. But but at the end of the day, I think the Climate Change Action Plan is what is truly transforming the system.
Right.
Touches everything. So I will just the importance of this and um the communications of it that that Christina mentioned that that we will, we will get better at that. We will continue to be better at that.
Yeah, well said. And and to add to what um board member just stated, I think it's, I think all too often, you know, folks just see the immediate upfront cost, right? It's like, oh, my God, this is too expensive. But I think that to the extent that we could start getting people to look at lifecycle costs like over time, that it's actually a cost savings, I think that that also would hopefully start to change minds because, you know, too often um folks that I'm getting a message here to start your video. I'm not, oh, I'm sorry, my video's not on. Can folks see me? Oh, I guess not.
You see your photo.
It's just the still image.
Okay, there we go. I must have pressed a lot of, I have so many screens opened up. But yes, I was saying, so yeah, so to the extent that um we start looking at that and maybe we, maybe something we start hiring, maybe consulting, something to do those those crunching numbers for us. But we need to start looking at things holistically and the lifecycle of costs and not just the here now. So just wanted to say that.
Thank you for that. We got one last hand up, Mr. Bill.
Yeah, thi- this was just um in reference, uh, a few of the members spoke about the uh, uh, what the walk, bike, roll. I don't know if they're in the right order, uh, but that that event um on May eighth. And one, you, if if uh, if you could get some more information about that event uh to me, um, you know, I I could, I can certainly share it in my networks. But on a larger scale, um, if we, i- if there's a way to incorporate that into some of like the Earth Day messaging, right? Like if there are activities associated with the idea of why it is important to to walk, bike or roll to school and then associated with that have like links to, okay, you know, this event that may give some folks traction into, oh, okay, I I didn't know anything about this. Um, and you know, fifty percent of our population already do this, but linking that to the why um and then to the event could, you know, help sort of push that uh along. So like I, I, this is a good month to sort of, you know, get that communication out, then leading into May when the the event occurs.
Yeah, good point.
I can certainly make that a follow up in the next day or two. Rather than just send the link, I could take a day or two and put together a full packet of the things that we've done. We've been participating in the event for about the last five years now.
No, that that's great. And I think it could also be um rolled in with uh potentially with the Project Zero, is it Vision Zero? It's either Project
Vision Zero.
Yeah, yeah, the Vision Zero work, right? Um, we're working with some of uh the those team members uh with the Student Environmental Alliance Summit, um, which as Director Morrison mentioned, is going to be uh April twenty fifth. Um, that day is at Blated Waterfront Park and then April twenty ninth at Bowie State University. They'll be more involved on, well, somewhat on both days. Um, but they'll be in the mix there also like in specific ways. But leveraging the work that they're doing at the county level in terms of safety there with the other messaging and activities might be a good uh partner to bring into that conversation.
I'll just say, we followed um Mount Rainier's leadership and do and participated at Cesar Chavez level. We've gotten the county to support those rides. So they actually closed down the sh- the streets for us on like um, um Agar Road and and so we can like safely cross and get to school because it's not a community school for most. So appreciate all of Tim's leadership and Mount Rainier as well as everyone.
So thank you for that, Tim. Um, well, um, I just wrote down an action that you're going to put together something and send it. Either you can send it to uh uh Cindy or you can send it to me and we'll we'll get it sent out. Uh, Ms. Novak.
Very clearly, I mean, one of the things that we might be hearing from each other right now is opportunities to connect things directly to the Climate Change Action Plan. So not just say, hey, we're going to walk to school because of this, but like Donald said, this is the why. This is our universal PG CPS why. It matches these Climate Change Action Plan goals.
Exactly, right.
So that might be like one of our early initiatives as a team.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's very true because we are doing a lot of things that may not be tied to that, right? So the key is, and is just like you, you said it really well, is that we need to like take the things that we're already doing and kind of organize it into the Climate Action Plan because there there are things being done, but a lot of times you don't even know it's being done. So, you know, one of the things, you know, the the first one of the front tires I would have is really to kind of like look at all that. Okay, what's being done that supports the Climate Action Plan? Okay, let's, let's roll it in and take, let's take credit for it. Let's just kind of package it nice and neat so that folks will kind of see the relationships. Yes, it's tied to that, you know, walkable streets, tied to healthy living, you know, um, food, cafeteria food, for example, you know, um, there's obviously a push, I I personally, you know, don't like foods with preservatives and, you know, we shouldn't be giving our kids that, right? So to the extent that we're already doing those things, we need to kind of tie that back um to the 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 food, the food uh piece of the Climate Action Plan, friendly foods and um healthy foods for our, for our students.
And I think um what we're doing here is we want to also make sure that, oh, sorry, hey, Commissioner Gomez, go ahead.
Um, yeah, just, just.
Um, yeah, just, just a quick comment, I feel like we've kind of touched on this throughout the conversation around budget. Uh but I I think it'd be really important for us to, as we're taking stock of like what all is going on. Tie a budget number to that to say like we've already prioritized X dollars. Throughout all of our initiatives, so because.
Right.
Budget is tight, it's probably always going to be tight, and I think we really want to be able to like fight for money to actually. Implement some of these things that are in the climate action plan, and so I think a a good seller would be like, hey, we're already prioritizing. X amount of dollars to this, so when we have like more asks, it's it doesn't seem. Outlandish or farfetched because we can already prove that we prioritize money for this, so. I think that's going to be really, really key, um because that's where we speak to our priorities, right, of like where we're putting our money.
Yeah. Agreed.
Agreed. Okay, I don't see any other hands up, but a lot of our conversation that we just had. Was a good segue into into our next um uh our next topic of discussion here, so if there's no further comments around. The Director Sustainability Report, I will. Let her go off the floor here, as I don't see any other hands, okay, so moving on here, so we want to make sure again, one of the goals of this of of this group and. Me personally, I know Pam is to, is to get the community and our students and our parents and our stakeholders. Involved in this, right? We want, we want them to feel as though they have a hand in what's happening. Um across across their county, you know, our our responsibility is to get the people going, right? And so I I, and so one of those things, and I I I'm actually going to give the floor back to Mr. Bill here around this. One of the things that that I've liked that we've had conversation around is um the Do One Thing Initiative. Um and I'd like him just to talk a bit about what that is as well as other initiatives and and programs that we we are utilizing across the system. Um and then have brief conversation around that, so the floor is yours, Mr. Bill.
Okay, thank you. So so yeah, we we've discussed um sort of the this uh dot. Or do do one thing, right, um sort of campaign that. Uh many of the schools that we've worked with in terms of whether they're certifying or recertifying. Their Maryland Green School status, um as as part of that certification process. Though to they they need to do what's called a celebration, right, something that could potentially impact everyone at the school. That everyone has an opportunity to participate in, and one of the things that has been successful in the past. Um although typically it's it's been done with within a school. Is like this this dot or do one thing campaign and schools have done it in a number of different ways. Um, uh, this is, this is reaching back more than ten years ago when. When I first started working with uh the Alliance for Climate Education. Um now they are uh the Alliance for uh or Action for Climate Emergency. They renamed, right, to to really put emphasis that this is a climate emergency, um but. It is simply asking everyone to think about and commit to doing one thing. Whether the scale is small or large, it could be, you know, I'm going to turn the water off when I'm brushing my teeth, right? Um, or I'm going to recycle something this week, um but just simply asking them to think and reflect on doing one thing. And then uh back before, right, electronic devices were as prevalent. Like schools would put them on posted notes or put it on a banner. Um and I've seen schools do some pretty creative things when they did posted notes and they make like a. The school letters or mascot out of them, um some of them are done electronically, right? You know, that helps save paper as well, um and so, you know, students and staff will commit to doing something. But it's on a Google form or some other type of platform to collect their responses with. Um and so uh that that has been done on a school level to promote like the celebration and help the school become a green school. Um among all the other requirements associated with the green school, but it's something that uh Dr. Harris. I've, you know, mentioned uh being interested in, and so um I guess Dr. Harris, you you know. Do you, do you want to open this up for discussion but um or questions, but that. That is something that uh we're looking, right, potentially at maybe trying to do something on a larger scale. Um across the system and there is some precedent with, right, like our Earth Day. Um, we we typically with the Schmidt Center, um and the staff there will put together like uh on behalf of. Um curriculum instruction, the board, like some some recommendations for Earth Day. Um, there are also other times of the year where we will promote. Um like a a particular sustainability initiative. Uh for example, and um in November for America Recycles Day, we work with. The C cap group as well as with the uh as well, as well as our communications office. To sort of put that out on like PG CPS Twitter as well as the webpage. Um and our communications team even built like a web, a landing page. Um where for America Recycles Day, like they could do this just that, like put in. Um like what are you doing on America Recycles Day? And you know, I know there were some responses there. So it could go a a lot of different ways, but it is something that we wanted to get the ball rolling on. Um because it's an easy way of of just creating awareness and getting folks thinking about their actions.
Yeah, I think that, and thank you, thank you for that, I think um. I think that from the perspective of this committee, I know that um. Both Pam and I worked with our schools and our our districts before specifically around kind of spinning up programs specifically. Uh that that note sustainable aspects, I know, I know, uh Board Member Adam Stafford's do it done as well, as well as beautification days and things of that nature. So from the perspective of a board member, I really do want to see this expanded across the system, right, and I think it's. You know, it's it's low level enough that we are, it's it's as the name implies, you do one thing, it doesn't have to be large scale, it can be small scale, you can partner with. You know, your um your city government, your commissioners, your your council, whatever that is, to get this one thing done, so this is um. I definitely will have discussion around it, a question for Pam specifically, um Pam, from a perspective of this committee to the board. Is there a way we can make that um can shape that into like a recommendation to say, oh, we we will obviously vote on it. But the recommendation of we'd like to see uh campaigns like this widespread across our system, maybe to challenge uh. To challenge schools individually or PTOs, PTSAs independently to do this. Um within the calendar year or something like that, is that something that we can do from a committee to a board perspective?
Yeah, I I think we can use this committee report outs, you know, we can um. We could come up with priori, we could come up with these with our, the priorities that come out of our discussions and bring those to the board. For recommended um for recommended support, action, whatever the proper terminology is, as we kind of work through this new. New group, but I I do think we need to do, that we will need to do more of that, like that was, you know, why it was really important to me to get the. You know, M- Maryland Climate Teaching Proclamation added to the board meeting, um. You know, because a proclamation is one way to make that official and provide resources to all of the s- school communities. All of the links to resources and to make it official and it had the Chief Academic Officer's name on it and my name on it, so. That carries some weight, so you know, I think we have multiple pathways, but I think one way that we to. Mi- have our ad hoc committee have some influence is to do exactly what you're saying, is to bring. Some of those priority messages forward to the board meetings.
So yeah, maybe it's something along the lines, and I see hands flying up now, so maybe it's, maybe it's something along the lines of um. Uh of recommending to the full board that we we stand up the the Do One Thing Campaign, you know. But um, uh yeah, the floor, the floor is open for questions, now we'll go to Ms. Novick and then Mr. Mark.
So are you uh wondering if this might work as sort of what? A couple of things we've talked about, a branding campaign, so it would be our rollout of. Um Climate Change Action Plan Committee, Do One Thing is kind of our branding for maybe this year. To get the word out and um if that were the case, if that's what you're suggesting. Maybe Walk to School would be Do One Thing, maybe each month we could promote. The, you can do anything you want, but we'd also say maybe this month you might want to do this one thing.
Yeah, I think I think having suggestions in place or even like a, you know, a quick cheat sheet to say. Um this this month is, you know, there's Earth Day within this month, or it's Water Conservation Day this day or something like that. I think it'd be great if we can make a a short list, but I wasn't thinking specifically around the branding aspect, but I love the idea, so I'm 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 happy with that, right? Um, let's go to Mr. Mark and then Ms. Clark.
Um, I had less of a question, more of just a suggestion, which is another thing coming up in April is the countywide Growing Green with Pride event. Uh which it happens on April twenty seventh and they always have a spring event and a fall event. Uh it's a great opportunity for parents to volunteer at a school. And so having more, just promoting that as a do do one thing, uh that's certainly one potential. And then also a note on the Walk to School Days, there's, those are also a twice a year event, there's a always one in in May and usually in October. But growing, I just wanted to make sure everyone on the committee knew that Growing Green with Pride is the, is April twenty seventh. Um and we are already signed up at Mount Rainier Elementary, but um that would be a good opportunity for other schools across the county.
Yeah, and if we don't, and if you all don't have the flyer, we'll include that in the package of things we're sending out, I know District Heights is involved already. Um but we'll, we'll send the package out to the rest of the group as well. Is that, does that include your comment, Mr. Mars?
It it, it does, yes.
Ms. Clark.
Yeah, thanks. Um, so I had a comment on the Do One Thing campaign and. This is in no way intended to critique the 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 campaign or the the intention behind it. But more so kind of rooted in um kind of what we know from the evidence and from research when it comes to. The tendency for educational um efforts to focus on low impact action. And I wonder if there might be also a way to enrich um such like a Do One Thing campaign to. Also focus on not only the individual actions that we can take on our own, but. Perhaps some of the collective action elements that are vital to achieving cla- broader climate justice and environmental justice. Um, I just, I I, it would be a shame to lose the opportunity. Um, to use that as an educational opportunity to go beyond just recycling and turning off lights and turning off water, but. You know, how can we enforce recycling at a systems level? How can we ensure, you know, producers are. Uh taking into account their responsibility around recycling, you know, so like, just like, how can we go the next step? Because as uh I think um. Uh Donald, you had mentioned ACE has, you know, even that they have re- rebranded because of the emergency that we are in when it comes to the climate crisis. And I think we really need to emphasize uh the collective action problem that we have and. Per- perhaps begin to shift our own messaging around the types of actions that we should be taking. Um so I just wanted to plug that in and maybe get our minds to think about how we might be able to amp up our efforts on that front. Thanks.
No, thank you for your comments there, any um, any other comments? I see you're still off, you missed a bill.
Yeah, yeah, just um uh along that last point, I think that's a really good opportunity. To uh sort of have not just students, but also, right, like our. Uh you know, our our community, our PG CPS community to look at, um. Al- almost like a systems thinking where, right, like, you know, there's, right, like individual actions, right? And then you have like your close circle and then you have community and then, right, like, you you know, it builds and builds. Right? And so like i- if if um, like, there's a a a good. Way to sort of market the message of, okay, you know, like, do one thing is is something, but like. Each one of those mirrors a larger collective action that's actually happening. That could also be a way to focus on, like, we were talking about like a communications method and platform earlier. To highlight some of the larger things happening at the county level, right? So if it is um. Like do one thing, like I, you know, I can compost, but what is PG CPS as a collective doing along composting? That will be the area to showcase, right, like these twenty schools plus the twelve that have added on this year. And then to show like their impact of the, like, how many tons of have we done collectively together? So, you know, highlighting like, uh, yes, individual, but it also takes collective action like across the whole. Right, to to move these things forward and then um like marrying that to like what Beth brought up. Um is, you know, I I don't think it would take too long to really think about like one thing per month. If you look at um like Growing Green with Pride, like for October, because that's the one where you can get the free trees and everything. I know, I know there's one um in April as well, which is typically just a mulch, but like, you know. Uh November is America Recycles Day, October is Growing Green with Pride and planting. Um April with the the new climate um teaching, right, like the, you know, that's three months right there. Of topics to be able to focus on, like and point folks to this larger effort, so you could communicate on a few different levels. So I I thought that was a really good point and an opportunity to connect like individual, but get them thinking like uh about the collective action. And broader actions that are needed, um as well as like sort of pairing that with with what Beth mentioned. And like highlighting like, yes, do one thing all all the time every day and here's something for this month. And then connecting that with, okay, what are we already doing along these lines and energy and in these different areas as well?
Well said, um, I think that, I think that. That's a great suggestion and it expands on what what Ms. Clark was just saying, I do. I do think that would be very impactful specifically if we can uh, you know, partner with, you know, folks at county level, for example. I think that'd be really, really impactful, sorry, Mr. Morris, see your hands up.
I I was just going to say, I think that what this discussion is getting to is the idea of one PG CPS. The that, from the collective standpoint, one one PG CPS and it's do do one thing a month, but. The whole mission of one PG CPS is do all you can.
So I think that it might be appropriate to um. I'm, uh let me go to Mr. Thompson and then I'll say my next point.
Yeah, one other thing I just wanted to throw out there, um um and someone may have, may have said it. Uh perhaps it would be nice to think about maybe at the um. Show, Showplace Arena or somewhere, one of the uh facilities. To have like a climate expo and career fair one 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 time during the school year or over during the summer or something. That was another thing I was just thinking about, um, because a lot of the kids are may or may not be exposed to all the career opportunities. Uh we've I've, we've participated in a couple at Bowie State, we've done a few couple at um. Uh in Northern Virginia, I'm not sure if there's currently one. That's kind of district wide or at a couple of schools, uh I know some of the schools do their own thing, but I don't know if there's like. One big one that kids from all over the county can come to and see employers, hear people speak and all that. It's something I was just thinking about, I'm not sure if anyone mentioned it already.
No, no one mentioned that, but that is a good idea, um that I'm jotting down in my notes section here. Uh for ways to get community involved and and again, that would take, that would take effort from.
And we we would love to help partner with the district on that, we do it all the time, so we can help shoulder a lot of that work if the district is interested.
Thank you, driving it down, um, uh colleague, Blue's Charles.
Yeah, thanks, I was just also thinking about how um that built into to this is. The is the advocacy that we, because we as a school system have prioritized um climate action, we actually. Together moved the entire Maryland Association of Boards of Education to have these standing resolutions in Annapolis. On the big picture of climate action and these bills, which gives us the opportunity to show up. With students, with parents, with the, with.
which gives us the opportunity to show up with students, with parents, with the with the school communities in Annapolis with Chispa, Maryland. We've already done that on electric buses. We um can do that on a wide range of bills and legislation because we have already um declared our position in the in this direction and and we can continue to lead by example and and uh through Sierra, with all of our partnerships here with uh League of Conservation Voters, Sierra Club. Continue and and I know um I know that An- An- Antoine is a former state legislator, is an expert in in that grassroots impact at the state level that is built in this too for the mu- for the bigger bigger action and and bigger picture of the uh systems change to meet our state and national responsibility to reduce climate emissions.
I agree that it is a collaborative effort, and we got, again, a powerhouse group here, folks is gonna get us uh where we need to be. Um for this, for the sake of um laying the plan on this conversation, as the Aha Committee is an advisory committee um without the authority to do anything, and Pam, let me know if I'm uh appropriate in this. I I believe it's appropriate to make a motion um to recommend to the full board and administration the implementation of the Do One Thing Campaign. We can kind of work out the details of what that is um and also, you know, work with them throughout the implementation process. Um but for this committee, I would like to make the motion to recommend the implementation of the Do One Thing Campaign. If there's a second. All right, um hey, Ms. Novick?
Um I remember when I talked to Pamela about um one of the things from the Aspen Group that you guys had heard was that we should uh that telling a story um is one way, getting that narrative. And this do one thing idea is a great way if we can get the Communications Department to really just focus on this monthly do one thing. And I would add to what Donald said, um you've got the whole um green school initiative happening in May where we have everybody at Sandy Point and all those green schools. So it would really it's it's kind of the low hanging fruit um that gets us through the first year of really getting that brand out and that story out that we are one PG CPS doing one thing towards our Climate Change Action Plan. So I really think that's a great idea to see if we can get the approval for that.
Definitely, a hundred percent. Thank you for your comment and 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 Mr. Bell. Thank you for the presentation and and the Do One Thing Initiative and and what you and your team, as well as uh Director Morrison are doing. Um is there any further discussion on the motion on the floor, which is, I'll read it back. The motion is to recommend the implementation of the Do One Thing Campaign to the Full Board of Education and the Administration. Uh the floor is open for discussion. Otherwise, I'll call for the vote. Okay, seeing no hands for discussion, uh Ms. Allen, can you call the role for me?
Sorry, Dr. Kenneth Harris? Ms. Buddha Strata? Donald Bell? Kate Co- oh, what's the last name? I'm sorry. Wondellig.
Hi.
Yazi Gomez?
Hi.
Joseph Jakuda?
Hi.
Christina Walk?
Hi.
Timothy Myers?
Hi.
Dorothy Morrison? David Loto?
Hi.
Beth Nowick? Nowick, sorry.
That's right, hi.
Ramon Palencia?
Hi.
Benjamin Roche?
Hi.
Antoine Thompson?
Hi.
Sophia Villar?
Hi.
Very good unanimously passed.
For Dorothy, I just wanted to say that.
Thanks, Director Morrison.
Yes, I for Dorothy. Which you just dunged on me, the acronym, do one thing, dot. Right?
Yeah, so unanimously passes. We'll we'll draft that up and send it to to the committee and then fur- and then further on to the Board of Education Administration. That's exciting, everyone. Fo- first first official action from our Aha Committee voted and passed unanimously. Um and so that, I'm I'm gonna land this plane for us tonight. Uh so so moving forward, uh thank you, everyone, for attending the meeting tonight. I think we had a really good discussion about a number of things. Again, in the future, what we'll do is uh for these agendas, they'll be honed in on specific topics. Um so if those topics don't apply to your specific area of expertise, or if you don't feel the need to attend, by all means, you know, you don't, you don't have to. Uh but we will be sending those agendas out in advance. In terms of the next step, the next climate action, the next Climate Change Action Plan Aha Committee meeting will be in May. We'll de- we'll determine the date, we'll send it out to you. Um and if the four thirty time typically works, we'll we'll aim for that as well. Uh the meeting will be virtual, and please be sure to check the PG CPS Board webpage for more information around the meeting. Um not seeing any further items on the agenda, I will call for a motion to adjourn. Oh, I see hands, sorry. Good, Ms. uh Adeline.
Well, I'm not sure Ms. Buddha Strata is about to say the same thing, but I just wanted to um mention that the panelists here will be getting a separate link from what is on the board webpage. So um from your email, you should be getting a link from Board of Education. That is the link you should be using when signing it.
Thank you for that clarification, uh colleague.
And I I was going to add a couple more administrative um points that so this the system board docs that we use for all of our agendas, you also should be getting these auto-generated um uh announcements that say a new meeting has been added. Um and we'll make sure all those emails are correct and and getting to you. Um so that I want, and then that, you know, is sort of the the skeleton agenda, and then as we have documents, those documents will go up early to, they'll go up with the announcement, so you could read ahead when we do have presentations. So I did want to note that you'll be getting those auto-generated. And then we we also will do some interim communications either from Dr. Harris or from his ad line, you know, that are administrative that keep everyone on track. So we'll just, you know, I think on our end, we're just gonna double check that everyone's emails are correct, they're all in the right place. And then I think also at times we'll send interim communications of interest, you know, like this event's coming up or we were there, here's an article where we were covered, you know, so we'll be doing things like that. Thank you, Dr. Harris.
No problem. Thank you for that administrative note, as well as um any information around um you know, community events that you'd like to attend, you know, individual for individual districts, we've been sent it out to the group in case you want to come out and support. Um I see two other hands, Director Morrison and then Ms. Novick.
Yeah, I do miss, I didn't say this. So we had actually had an internal, um we had our Pride Area Two meeting uh today, and I obviously told them about uh the board meeting. And so I was asked the question to share with what I think I already know the answer, but I'll just put it out there. The question is, will this committee serve as a vehicle for the administration to articulate things like challenges, resource needs, et cetera, et cetera, to the board?
Yes. Ms. Novick?
Thank you for that.
Uh sorry, I'm I'm one of those students, my hand is always up. Um I did want, Donald Bell and I have been talking about students who would participate. Can you just think about that a little bit, Dr. Harris, and let me know? Um can you confirm the number of students you would like to participate? We have two suggestion now, uh was originally three that possibly could. But you can communicate that through email, but I didn't want to leave the meeting without kind of saying that's on my mind. And I've been working with Donald on that.
Yeah, we'll definitely, we'll connect offline about, I know myself and um uh Board Member Boozer Stroud have had a number of conversations around it. Um so we'll we'll address that uh offline, but thank you for the work that you're both doing in that area. All right, committee, any additional comments, thoughts, anything you want to say before we get off for tonight? Okay, seeing no other hands, I will call and no other business on the agenda, I'll call for a motion to adjourn. Everyone's
Joseph Booset.
All right, everyone, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, take care.